Recording in progress.
Okay. Want to go ahead and call us to order. This is a regular meeting of Mayor and City Council. Today is Monday, June 10th. First order of business is to stand if you can and offer a pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, so I have a couple of announcements, some of which might be duplication in Ellen Lorraine's manager's report, but I did, I was just mentioning to council before that we won't see each other again as a regular meeting until after 4th of July. So Ellen Lorraine will get into the 4th of July activities that will occur prior to our July meeting. And another event that will occur in the more near term will be Juneteenth, and that will be actually on that Saturday, which is the 22nd, going from about 1:00 to about 6:00 o'clock. And the reason we do it on that Saturday is there is a Juneteenth also in Georgetown, actually on the 19th, if folks are interested in that one. You feel free to attend, but ours will be on the 22nd, following the farmer's market, essentially. Okay? The other announcement I'm pleased to make is that prior to this meeting, the council voted to authorize me to execute an agreement with our new city manager, Ellen Lorraine McCabe, so I'm pleased to announce that. So she's moved, after we signed the agreement, she'll move from our acting city manager to our full-time city manager, and then she'll make some other moves on her part to get her staff together, and we're happy to announce that. And I'm sure Bill Shoal is also happy.
(applause).
Okay. And just as another announcement, and this pertains to Bill, is we offer public comment at the end, so we won't take public comments during a regular meeting. We have workshops and public hearings for those, so if you do want to make comment, we will reserve some time at the end of this meeting. I don't believe we have any additions or deletions to the agenda, so I'll go ahead and press forward. The first recognition that I'd like to make is to Mr. Kenny Morris. Is Kenny here? Oh, there he is. Kenny is, well, it's Louis, I should say, is celebrating 10 years with Kenny Morris. So I'd like to offer you tonight, Ellen Lorraine told me, I can only offer you the, sort of the laurels, and tomorrow, which is actually 11th, his 10th anniversary, he'll get a check. So that, we appreciate your service, Kenny. Come on up and give me a handshake, if you will.
Kenny.[202.87][202.90](applause).
I'm sure Bill wants to get our picture up here for Bill. All right.
Thanks very much.
Thank you, Kenny. Now, the next one is a presentation of the Delaware 2024 Build a Better Mouse Trap Competition Award, and this is going to Christopher Chaney of the city's maintenance department by the Delaware Two-Squared L-Tap Center. Is that, okay, did I, I got that right? T squared at Lap Center? Okay. So do you want to come up and get, maybe give a little bit of background about the award and then make your presentation, please? I saw the trophy, it's...
Fabulous trophy.
Yeah, it's one of the cooler trophies, I've seen it.[258.47][258.50](laughing).
Thank you and good evening. My name is Rusty Lee, I'm the director of Delaware's T2 L-Tap Center. Quick story about the center. We are federally and state-funded, we are housed at the University of Delaware, and we have the shortest federal charter of any organization on the planet. We're basically told, get out, meet our locals, help them with whatever transportation needs they may have, do whatever we can to help. So Federal Highway hosts a competition each year called the Build a Better Mouse Trap. It is not about road and control, it is about fostering innovation and celebrating those innovations that come about. These are not things that get bought on eBay, these are things that somebody sitting in a shop said, "Well, wouldn't it be better if we did this and cut it and welded it to that?" And that's where the foundation of these items come from. So this is, so this is a statewide competition, we solicit entries each year, and we get to celebrate the winners. So with that in mind, we have a plaque, we have the fabulous trophy, which is suitable for road and control if needed, emergency road and control.
Rusty, if you don't mind, we really do prefer to call that the prestigious trophy.
Prestigious trophy, I'm sorry. The prestigious trophy, yes. And a $100 gift card.
Oh, I don't...
So, Chris.
Yay.[342.67][342.70](applause).
Do the pictures here, let's do the photo, oh, let's get the trophy, got to get the trophy.
Why don't we give him a chance?
And what is, what is the Build a Better Mouse Trap?
Chris, do you mind, just, talk through what your, what your idea was?
Yeah.
Give us the microphone, please.
So we had an old plow that wasn't being used, but a vehicle that was already sold, and that would use and be, I guess, purposeful for the city to use, to save money in, not have to buy another piece of equipment if we already have it. So attach it to the loader that we already had, backlay the beach, but also for snow removal, in larger streets, easier to get around. You can backlay on the beach where we have, we have to wait on den wreck to come out, so we can start to help do it ourselves around the benches, people walkways, stuff like that.
Did you weld that together yourself?
Yeah, me and Kazuki Carroll. So...
Very cool. Thank you, Chris.
You guys have a good day.
Good, good.
You have 100% of the center here also, just to let you know.
I am 2/3 of the center by weight.[432.44][432.47](laughing). That's tremendous.
I'm here.
Get it, we're good.
There you go. All right, let me get the...
She blinked.
Thank you so much.
Authorization goes on the back.
You know, one of the, one of the things that we really... Come on up and, yeah, please. One of the things we were particularly struck by about this was, you know, sort of the investment in personnel, right? And so one of the things that was really interesting to us was that, you know, Chris found an opportunity in this project to bring a couple of other people in the crew who didn't have experience with cutting and welding and things, and sort of teach them a new skill and develop them. And it's something where we talk the talk a lot, but we don't always walk the walk, and we thought this was a great example of where we're actually walking the walk. So we, we're really, we're really pleased with this particularly submittal, so, and we appreciate you all having us down, it's always nice to come down to Lewis, so... We appreciate you offering up this opportunity and, you know, encouraging innovation, that's great, that's great.
Did you mention the national competition?
I did.
Okay, very, not to, it dulls me just this. So in addition to this, so there, this, there's a center like ours in every state, and Puerto Rico, and then there's seven centers for the tribal nations as well, and each year there's a nationwide Build a Better Mouse Trap competition, looking at innovations, and so submittals get made all over the country, and so as a result, our winner gets submitted to the national competition. We'll find out the results of that at our national conference in Albuquerque in late July, I think it is. And so, fingers crossed, we've, we've had a winner before, so who knows, right? So we, we'll be back to talk to you again. So thanks so much, everybody.
Wonderful, thank you.
I just want to mention, we had the opportunity with the police last, I think it was last week, the week before, with the accreditation, and, you know, within that department, you see the guys are, one, the teamwork and the furthering their, their skill sets, and it's good to see that that's also happening across, you know, other areas of the, of the city, and it really goes a long way, like you said, team building and the whole nine yards, so really great to have those programs, much appreciated. So the, the next thing is a Juneteenth proclamation. As I mentioned, the Juneteenth celebration will be Saturday, the 22nd, at H.P. Smith Park. I think this is the third year, is that right, Janet, the third, third year?
Yeah.
Okay. And one to six, they typically have local community leaders give talks, and they have music, and they have different booths, binging crafts and food trucks and such, so it's a good, it's a fun day, actually. But Juneteenth, for those aren't familiar, I'll read this proclamation. Whereas Juneteenth is a significant day in American history commemorating the day when 2000, or, I'm sorry, a quarter of a million slaves in the state of Texas, the last bastion for slavery during the final days of Civil War were declared free by the U.S. Army. And whereas the city of Lewis recognizes the importance of Juneteenth as an opportunity to honor the strength, resilience, and enduring spirit of Black Americans throughout history, and whereas celebrating Juneteenth provides an occasion for reflection, education, and commitment to working towards a future where every individual enjoys the freedoms and rights that are the cornerstone of our democracy. And whereas the city of Lewis, the annual Juneteenth celebration to be held June 22nd, 2024, offers an opportunity to memorialize this historic event through cultural activities, educational programs, music, and the spirit of unity and camaraderie amongst all residents. Be it resolved, therefore, I, Andrew Williams, mayor of the city of Lewis, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim June 19th, 2024, as Juneteenth in the city of Lewis, and encourage all residents to join the celebration, reflection of the significance of this day in American history. Let us use this occasion to reaffirm our dedication to the principles of equality, justice, and freedom for all citizens. So we thank for that, we thank the African-American Heritage Commission, who really organizes that, they've been along with the parks and rec, and also cooperating with the farmer's market, so it's really got a good example of different groups working together in Lewis, so looking forward to that. So then, we have a couple of appointments. The Public Arts has recently grown, really, because they also are a very hands-on group as you'll see, the art is in Ellen Lorraine's report, these are sculptures, they help install and things, so the art committee, one needs members for that, but also fresh ideas, and so they've been working well together, and I'd like to consider the appointment of Cassidy Williams and Deb Hanson with terms, they will actually start in June, this says May 1st, but they will actually expire May 1st, 2027, so it's just to align with the different appointments that are already in that commission. Can I get a nomination on that basis?
I'd like to nominate both Cassidy Williams and Deb Hanson for appointment to the Public Art Committee.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay, and Board of Ethics, and this is a reminder, there's, so Board of Ethics, we're going to renew too, we are looking to appoint another, and I think it was mentioned last month that we have a portal now, so for folks that we aren't aware of that are interested in serving on committees and commissions, please do apply on, it's on the city site now, and provide a little bit of background on maybe some, which committees and commissions you're interested in, and we will be making some appointments in the next month in, you know, areas such as Bike and Ped and Parks and Rec, and as I said, Board of Ethics and Board of Adjustment, so those are just to name a few that are coming up. And we have had some people volunteer for those, and we appreciate, and we will be reaching out to those folks for consideration. But with this, I'd like to ask for the reappointment of Charlotte Bastian and Diana Beebe, who've served us well on the Board of Ethics, and their term to, to run through November 1st, 2026.
I move that we reappoint Charlotte Bastian, as well as Diana Beebe, to, term for Charlotte Bastian ending on November 1st, 2025, and Diana Beebe serving until November 1st of 2026.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and we thank all our committees for their services, they all take on a lot of work. So next is the consent agenda, and the only one I wanted to pull out myself was just to, just again, reiterating the appointments, just so that those weren't at the special meeting, can hear those again. Beyond that, Chief, is anything you wanted to mention from the police report, or anything you wanted to mention in general, or, 4th of July is already, you ready for 4th of July soon?
We will be ready for the 4th of July, of course. The plan is reasonably well-developed, similar to previous years.
And, you know, I don't think you've actually had the opportunity to tell the public about the accreditation that you just went through, if you wanted to mention that.
Yeah, I was just going to also add that on, May 30th, the Lewis Police Department underwent an onsite accreditation review by the Delaware Police Accreditation Commission. After a full day of vetting our policies for compliance with, I think, 108 standards, best practices in law enforcement, we were unanimously approved to be recommended for accreditation at the next quarterly board meeting, and I believe possibly the Secretary of Homeland Security and the Post Director should be at our August 10th, I think it is, council meeting to present us with it. So, yeah, it was a good day, our staff did a lot of work in preparation.
Proud of your staff and shared the accreditation, so well done. Austin, are you, did you want to make any mention on thing on BPW?
Yeah.
Come on up, buddy.
So just a couple things, so Donovan Smith, that progress continues, sanitary sewer was completely finished, meaning the mains and the cleanouts, they're starting to connect services on in the sewer side, and then on the water, they're continuing to finish the mains within the park. I believe they did pressure test and also installed services for one section of main, their focus right now is sewer, and that's what they're working on. We did send information out for PFOS and UCMR-5 testing that, I think was sent out last week or the week before. We also have a website where you can go and get all the information, all the testing results, everything, and then we're also working on lead and copper rule mailing, which will be a survey that's sent out. We sent the first tranche out, it's a lot of information, it's basically going to be a survey that each homeowner would get, you fill the survey out, there are a couple, there's videos online, we just launched a website, I believe, today, just a section of our website that goes into what people can do to fill out the survey, you can do it online, you can do it via paper, but you'll start seeing those, they may not all come at the same time, it's a lot of information to send out, that's pretty much it.
Thanks, Austin.
Yep.
Appreciate. Okay, so like I said, I think the rest, the finance, the other, the one just to make note of, the, we're not looking to accept the 21224 regular meeting minutes, those weren't circulated, so we're, I'm not, when I ask for consent agenda, those won't be included. Beyond those, any of the other minutes, or anyone wanted to pull, or they're all good?
No, I just wanted to make a point that the minutes are very well-prepared, and I appreciate the effort being put into preparing them.
Thank you.
They're very nicely done, thank you.
I don't know, anyone from that's recognized from the fire department? No? Okay, and I don't see anyone from the fire department, so they've attached, we appreciate their report, so as I said, I'm going to just, we had made these appointments at a special meeting when, at councilperson Marasco's swearing in, so nothing from our side has changed, I just wanted to reaffirm these now. So Deputy Mayor is Khalil Saliba, Secretary Tim Ritzert, Assistant Secretaries Ashton Akorian, Treasurer Amy Marasco, City Solicitor Alex Byrne, Ex officio to BPW is myself, Ex officio to BPW Finance Committee is Amy Marasco, Code Enforcement will be John Robitaille, Ex officio to Planning Commission is Amy Marasco and Tim Ritzert, Ex officio to H-Park is Councilperson Elder, Ex officio to Parks and Rec is Councilperson Ritzert, Ex officio to Bike and Ped and African-American Heritage Commission is Councilperson Saliba, Ex officio to Public Arts, Councilperson Ritzert, Ex officio to, oh, actually, so the head of Mitigation Planning Commission is myself, and Ex officio to Mitigation Planning is Councilperson Marasco, Councilperson Elder, Councilperson Marasco will be on the Finance Committee, and Councilperson Saliba will be coordinating the, the intergovernmental relations to Sussex County and the state. As we said before, he may choose to appoint some citizen deputies, as we've done in the past, but he'll, he'll be organizing that, and it's done a good job so far, I would like to say. And then with the FOIA coordinator, that is our clerk, Ashley Akorian. And so with that, there's no lease extensions, can I get a motion then to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as prepared.
Okay.
I'll second.
Second, Councilperson Marasco, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving right along, we have a presentation of the city manager's report. Ellen Lorraine, you let Blue bring that up and take it away. All right.
So I wanted to start right out with some photos of our beach patrol, they began providing coverage for Savannah and Johnny Walker beaches the weekend of Memorial Day, and these are just some photos of the training that they have gone through already, and they also complete daily physical training, and they are certainly well-prepared to, to make sure everyone who visits our beaches are safe. So if we go to the next page, this is just a photo of the, our beach patrol, and we are appreciative of the talent that we have working for the city this summer. So as the mayor mentioned, there were six sculptures installed at George H.P. Smith Park by Paul Daniel in April, and our city staff has lots of talents, and we were able to utilize some of that talent from Blue Jade to prepare videos of each of these sculptures, as well as complete an interview with the artist, Paul Daniel, so you're going to see those videos on our YouTube page, and then you also see them on our Public Art Committee webpage for reference. So those sculptures will be in that park until September. The Summer Concert Series began last Tuesday and will continue for 12 weeks. The concerts are held in Stango Park, there is a ring location of Cape and Lope in High School, they begin at 7:00 p.m. and end at 8:30, and through that link, you will be able to see a listing of upcoming performances, so we welcome all to join us with bringing a chair or a blanket and enjoy the music at that location. New for this year, we are going to be offering an opportunity for city committees and commissions to educate attendees to those concerts about what those committees and commissions have done, and also to be a possible recruiting opportunity to get the talent that we have in our community to start serving. Tomorrow evening, beginning at 4:00, there will be a open house by, held by Del Dot, and this will be the Five Points Transportation Study Public Open House, there'll be a presentation at 4:00 o'clock and at 5:00 o'clock, otherwise it's a come and go and question and answers. You can get more information about the work that the Five Points Transportation Study Group is doing by accessing that link. Mayor Williams mentioned that the Juneteenth Committee will be hosting the third celebration on June 22nd, it will be in H., George H.P. Smith Park, again, beginning at 1:00, ending at 6:00. This is the third year, and it is the largest one they've held so far, with 70-plus vendors, organizations, and not-for-profits. In the event that there is inclement weather, this celebration will be held inside the Cape and Lope in High School on the same day and at the same times, and so we appreciate the support that our community, our businesses have given to this celebration. The next is a reminder that the Second Weekly Trash Collection Service will begin Friday, June 28th, and it will continue each Friday for 10 weeks. This does not change the normal scheduled collections for trash and recycle that occur on Mondays and Tuesdays, this is a subscription for those who wanted to have a second collection during this 10-week period. And again, the intent is to reduce city cost, fuel cost, maintenance cost, and to be more efficient in how we collect. There will be a public hearing on Monday, July 1st, at 5:30 in the Rollins Center, and it will be to get comment on two proposed ordinance changes. One is to change the short-term gross receipts rental tax rate from 5% to 6%, this is just for short-term rentals, and the second is to include, mending the code, to include an up to 3% lodging tax. You can read more about each of those on those links. So this will be the sixth year that the Go Fourth Committee will be hosting the fireworks on July the 4th. This event is sponsored by the community and area businesses who make donations to this event. Other events going on this same day include the children's games on Second Street that begin at 9:00, the Boe Parade that starts at Roosevelt Inlet about 1:30 and finishes at Fisherman's Wharf, there will be an awards ceremony at 3:30, and the infamous Suda Parade, which will begin around 5:00 o'clock as they travel down King's Highway. So it will be a busy day, there will be lots of traffic to include pedestrian, bicycle, and vehicular, so there will be delays, and we want everyone to plan accordingly. Also, for everyone's safety, bonfire permits will not be issued on this day, our beaches get very crowded, and so we want everyone to have an enjoyable and safe experience viewing the fireworks, so we do, will not be allowing those. And we also want to encourage that you do allow yourselves extra travel time, and we also want you to be patient for everyone, give lots of patience for everyone, and to obey the directions that our Lewis Police Department officers will be giving to the public to ensure that everyone has an enjoyable celebration on Independence Day. There was a public hearing held on June 3rd regarding Henlopen Bluff development, it was stated that the written public comments will be accepted through noon on July the 5th. You can provide comments by accessing that link, and you can also get more information about this development. We do have a few service employment anniversaries that I want to recognize, the first would be our lieutenant in our police department, Jim Azado, has, will have 22 years of service for the city in June, and our very own chief, Tom Spell, will have eight years in June, so we appreciate their service. We want to recognize a new employee, Darren, DJ, as we call him, Farren, who was the new Code Enforcement Officer, he began his full-time employment with the city in May, and Joe Downey is our Assistant Dockmaster, he was in our parking, and now he's gone to Assistant Dockmaster, so we appreciate the new staff. As was mentioned, on May the 30th, the Police Department participated in an accreditation process, and I just wanted to reiterate that I'm very proud of the members of that department, the time that was spent to, to go through the process to make sure that we are as current and on best practices as possible, was no small feat, and we just appreciate all that, all the work that was done. The upcoming Mayor and City Council workshops will be on June 27th and on July 25th, or typically the fourth Thursday of the month, starting at 10:00 o'clock. Our next regular meeting will be July the 8th and August the 12th, and City Hall will be closed on Wednesday, June 19th, and on Thursday, July 4th. The departmental operations are at the end, and I will let each of you read them at your leisure, I just will say that if you turn to page, new business licenses, we saw an increase calendar year of 52 more this year as compared to last year, our short-term rentals are up 46, and our long-term rentals are up 28. And one other note would be about building permits, while May of '24 is down four compared to May of '23, the fiscal year-to-date, we are up by 41 building permits issued. Are there any questions?
I have a question, going back to the front part of the presentation, perhaps this is a question that Janet might be able to answer, well, I know she can. On the occasion that there is inclement weather and there is a Stango Park concert, do you have a policy with respect to when you call the event to move it into the high school?
So the high school requests that we make that determination by noon on Monday.
Oh.
So they, so that they can manage their staffing to support getting us in there and getting the performers in there, so it's by noon on Monday.
And when that call is made, in other words, this move from Stango to the high school, that is posted on our web?
It's, it's posted on the website, we do email and text notifications to those who have subscribed, and we also put it out at the park, two signs at the park, one's a sandwich board and one's another sign that says that it's been moved, and it's the greatest cause of angst for me to have to do that.[1787.13][1787.16](laughing).
I have a similar question, in fact, it's the same question, but it applies to the Juneteenth event. I know that the same arrangements are made for that, where it will be held in the high school. I know that the same arrangements are made for that, where it will be held in the high school if the weather is... And is it, do you have that same requirement that it's called the day ahead of eight? Well, that would be...
Would be Friday.
Twenty hours ahead?
Right. So I have not yet spoken to the school about what kind of lead time they would need on that, but I suspect that it's probably at least 24 hours.
And again, that would be supported on the webpage?
Yes, yep.
Thank you very much.
Okay. All right.
Thank you, Don Lorain. So now we move on to the unfinished business portion of our agenda. And the first item is H1, discussion, possible action on a request by the legal representative of the applicant of J.T.J. Delaware Investments or D. Investments LLC for Site Plan 2-23, which is White's Pond Preserve. Sussex County Tax Map 335-8.12-79.00, this is Zoned R2. And this is to determine whether Clara Lane will be maintained as a public or private roadway. So I think everyone's had a chance to look at that. In the letter, it does mention, as you said, we kind of punted on whether to declare it public or private, and they've had a chance to consider and would, I guess at this point, prefer private. I was going to invite Mr. Horner up to clarify one part, if you wouldn't mind. Are you, John, do you mind just, there was the very last part in your, I guess it's your second paragraph where it says, "The ability to obtain dedication of the road subject to the neighbor's property willing..." So you're implying that by staying private, that'd be an easier pathway for you to get entrance to your neighborhood?
It would. Well, ultimately, we'd have to, the fee simple owner of the land on the Gibbs property, they'd have to agree to the dedication. We've had discussions about that, but then when the city indicated they, they were desired for it to be private, we kind of discussed it internally amongst our team and said, you know, that's what the city wants. We're okay with it, and it'd probably be an easier path forward, probably for everybody.
And then with respect to, there's some proxies in the city where this relationship exists, like Cape Shores, they have private roads, for example, and they get snowplow and they get trash. But at the same time, people are allowed to, you know, bicycle through there and all that kind of thing. Do you envision maintaining private in all senses of the word, or?
I would envision within the neighborhood itself maintaining private. And the primary reason is because we have that commercial use right next door. And so the concern that we had was that if we're going to have a large restaurant or other use there, we didn't want overflow from that to go into the streets here. So there's, that was the goal, was to keep this private in that sense. Now, I don't think that, I think the plowing and everything might, so there's no, there's no plowing or other services being requested. That's all going to be handled by the association. Now, trash service would be done by the city, but as far as maintenance of the road, snowplowing, that's all going to be covered by the association.
So you'd have some sort of, do you have a draft of like what you'd like that to, like agreement of the maintenance side?
Uh, it would be covered in the HOA declaration. So the HOA declaration that was actually submitted with the initial package identifies common area maintenance. So this would just be identified as the common area in that.
How about the one, because only one can, no, it's not a concern, it's just like, this, the water, the stormwater management feature, the pond, you were kind of sort of promoting that as something that could be...
That was the interesting thing is that the, the discussion around that, of course, you know, I'm not allowed to speak when you guys are doing your deliberation, and I went back and all the notes and even looked at the hearings. And there was never any discussion amongst from the applicant that the gazebo itself was going to be open to the public because that was sort of a weird thing that you were going to have people walking into the community with, there's nowhere, there's no like access, it's not a throughway, and then just going and standing in the gazebo. The discussion centered around, there's going to be a plaque to sort of identify what the rain garden did and the feature that was described to it. But we never planned on opening up the community amenities that were specific to that community to the broader community at whole. And that, and that's why when the discussion started happening, when you were doing your deliberations, I'm like, whoa, 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 where was this coming from? But of course, the applicant doesn't, at that point, the public hearing's over with. But I went back, and I encourage you, you don't trust me on the record on this, go back and listen to the public hearing, and we were consistent about that. Because I was concerned that I had set the wrong tone about that being open to the public, because it was never intended. That was going to be open, that's a community amenity.
Would this impact the bicycle connection?
No, the bicycle connection would still be there. It's, the same bicycle connection is right there. The main thing is, and frankly, the way the design is, it comes out and then it bulbs out, and then it goes. And the bicycle connection is at that bulb?
Yes.
So we would probably be trying to more like restrict access after that bulb, which means you've got the full connection to the bike trail. So we would either do that, whether it be signs that say like, hey, private drive, or, you know, no, no exit, something like that, or even potentially a gate or something like that. That would be our goal there. Because again, the biggest concern is the overflow. If you have a large commercial restaurant there, we already know people are going to use that parking lot to access the bike trail because it's, it's right there and it's a parking lot. You get people parking to access the bike trail, plus you get people parking to go to the restaurant. They're going to flow over into these streets, and it's problematic.
I have a question or two. What about the lighting in the community? Would that was...
So I believe the conditions of approval were sort of your standard condition about the, I can't remember, the dark sky lighting was included in those, but the, the same conditions, there's no request to amend any of those conditions. So the same lighting.
Would the lighting now become an HOA asset and that they would own and maintain?
Does the city operate all the streetlights now? I don't know the answer to that because the street lighting would still be, so that would all be HOA as well? I, I don't have a problem with it being HOA. I, I guess it's more, is it a BPW? I frankly don't know the answer. I'm fine with whatever the determination is, but I just don't know the answer.
You're going to have to meter it out of the transformer.
Yeah. That's, that's, can be solved, there's a solution.
Yeah, I don't know of any other community that's doing it that way, though.
I understand.
That's only, I'm just throwing it out.
We're going to be the first, right, John?
Well, I mean, we are, but I guess the alternative is that the city would just have the streetlights.
Yeah, you would just have, whether it be a right-of-way or an easement, that would extend. Because utility-wise, we would still need an easement for water sewer.
Yeah, so the easements and everything are going to be there. Frankly, this was just to address the road. If the city wants those lights to be private, I think it gets, if it's the only neighborhood that's like that, I would ask to keep the lights to be a city utility, but ultimately, whatever you decide, we go along with it.
I'd like to also speak to the gazebo asset and also what was described to be that stormwater management piece there. And it was my, it's my understanding and recollection that that was supposed to be an opportunity for what I'm going to call public education, where people would be able to, members of the public would be able to visit the site and actually with the plaque, the signage and so forth, understand what is being accomplished with that stormwater management asset. It's very unusual, it's in the middle of the, it was in the circle. You know, it's not part of the larger landmass, if you will. It's in that circle. And I, I, I'm concerned that, but first of all, by your description, that it was not expected to be available to the public. And because that's contrary to my recollection, I have not gone back and listened to the meeting minutes, so, or the meeting. So you have an advantage there, but that is my recollection. And is your, are you keeping with that same design where there will be a gazebo and that same stormwater management will still be there in that circle?
Correct, there's still a gazebo, rain garden, I mean, all the plans are going through, but there's still a gazebo, rain garden, that is, that is still the design. There was the request that came through the planning, that came through the Parks and Rec Commission originally to planning and zoning for that plaque. But we've never put out there that it was going to be open to the public. Because again, this is a community amenity, and it's, you don't really have communities where you say, hey, this is an amenity for the community, but it's for the entire public.
Right, but we also had the, if I remember correctly, the plan showed public parking on one side of Clara Lane, if I remember correctly.
No.
There was, I believe, well, I, I'm sorry, I'm not better prepared for this discussion.
I can tell you there, and of course, Janelle can comment as well because she's seen the plans, there's no public parking.
I'm not, I'm talking about curb parking. I'm not talking about a parking lot at all.
Like even on-street parking? There was never any indication of that. And in fact, I believe with the street width being the 22 feet, is on-street parking?
I'm double checking.
Okay, yeah, so I know that, there's never, we've the entire time, maybe there, where the confusion stems from is because they requested that plaque, and there was a sense that that plaque would want to be seen by more people. But for us, it's always been a community amenity.
I think where perhaps some of the confusion, it was really supporting that this is a very green, innovative plan. And so I think that's where, where you're coming from, Councilman Ritter, is that you're, what you proposed to the Planning Commission, City Council, was innovative, and maybe others could consider these same things. So that's probably where we're coming up with, we'd want people to see it besides just the 13 homes that are in there. So, so, you know, a gated community that they couldn't ever go into to see. But you're raising that, you know, you're not looking for tour buses to come in and see your great ideas, right?
Correct. And I don't think the residents are either.
No, exactly.
The future residents.
But maybe there's some ways, in some other ways, like tours or something for garden tours. I'm just thinking of other ways to be able to feature.
And, and we're happy, I mean, if there's a way to feature it, even through publication, through press, because I think developers should be looking at these types of green features. If there's a way, I'll tell you, I don't think developers are going to drive down and read a gazebo plaque. So I don't know that it's the most effective way. If there's a more effective way that we can get this messaging out, I'm by all means happy to work with the city in saying, hey, you know, here's a story about how the city and the developer worked together on some green initiatives. Because really, this, this worked because of the changes in your code that, that offered the ability for green stormwater management facilities to count towards the open space calculation. So it's certainly something that I'm happy to work with the city on. And I think that would be more effective messaging than...
Come by when you have a chance. No, I think that's, that's a great suggestion that we should follow up on.
Just going to lights, the only other thing you could do is, I believe Jerry Verden's subdivision did it, where they, they put a light in the, in the plan that came off of the individual homes.
In lieu of, in lieu of streetlights, they had like each, by covenant, each house had its own street.
I just don't know what's already been designed.
Streetlights have been designed.
But anyway, you could be, it could be accomplished by granting easements or lights.
The easements will be in place for the BPW anyways and for the city and, and all that. So the city is, and the city is going to have the right of ingress and egress over this because you've got to get there for traffic. Obviously, we can't say, hey, police officer, there's an emergency here, but you don't have an easement. So it's, you know.
Charlie, did you have a question or a comment?
I've also touched on it, but...
Come on up and just introduce yourself for the record.
Yeah, Charlie O'Donnell, GMB City Engineer, BPW Engineer, just a quick question. For the part that's in front of the Gibbs property, that's an existing easement between DRBA, Gibbs, and you guys, right? Yeah, I knew there was a third party. Will the BPW easement acquisition be difficult, given that that's a three-party existing easement?
So that, that's a, it's a tri-party agreement, and it, and it has an existing utility easement within it, that the BPW. So the whole 30 feet is, includes a utility easement for the benefit of our parcel. As far as granting a separate easement to the BPW, we won't be able to do that because we don't have the fee simple to do it. But you can piggyback on the utility easement that says, hey, this is an easement necessary for running these lines and everything like that, and giving us the maintenance rates.
Okay, we'll have to talk about that.
You want to talk to Mike Hoffman about that one?
Michael, be good with it. Michael, be good with it. Yeah. I mean, it's all we have, so it's, you know.
The board's thrilled.
But you have, there's an existing utility easement that runs...
Correct, so the easement is for...
For all to Freeman Highway.
Wait, that entire 30 feet is an easement that's reserved for ingress, egress, and utilities.
Right.
So.
And it's assignable, correct?
Well, it's not, it's not even about assignable. We're allowed to, because if it's for, if it's for the benefit of that parcel, like you wouldn't say, oh, I need to assign this to the power company, I need to assign this to cable company. It works for that. So it does allow for all the utilities. Correct, yep.
One, one last question from me, John. Is there a drop-dead date when you need this? I was trying to maybe give my counsel some time to consider, but if you need action, like...
We're kind of, I kind of need the action. I've been asking for a little bit to get on the agenda.
I was going to say, I was going to ask if we're going to take action because I think...
I mean, to be fair, I think to your point in the letter, we did punt then, so we should be prepared. I think, I'll just, yeah, I mean, any other comment if we want to call to...
I think we asked for Janelle to do some research. Were you going to make a comment?
So I would suggest that the easements continue all the way down to the cul-de-sac because right now there are no easements there. So you'd need utility easements and whatevers you needed, needed from BPW and the city for easements for what isn't currently in that 30-foot. And then I, if you're going to make a motion to make it private, it's a private street dedicated for public use, which allows others, the city, to access. It's the standard way all private streets are typically. It's, it's a private street owned and maintained by the homeowners association, but it's dedicated for public use.
Right, well, we'd like to be able to limit the access, though, past that bulb is the key. If it's going to be private, it's going to be maintained by the HOA, and we're going to have private traffic on it. We want the ability to limit that. The other thing I'll say, though, before we jump on the easements, and I welcome your counsel to weigh in on this. We, all we have is an easement for ingress, egress, and access. And so we can only, you can't grant a greater estate than what you have. And so what that means is, we don't have fee simple ownership to the land, so I can't grant easements beyond what we have. And so the city has to, if we have an easement for ingress, egress, and utilities, then that's, that grants access to us, to our guests, our invitees, everybody that we would want to invite. And the city can sort of piggyback off of that, and same with utilities, they can piggyback off of that. I mean, so there's, we just can't grant any other easements without owning it.
The rest of it you can.
On our, oh, yes, certainly.
Yes.
That's all she's talking about.
I'm talking about, I'm talking to your land.
Okay, good.
Yes.
On the piece on our land, the easements in the right-of-way will show for that. But again, I'd ask if it's a private road, after that bulb, for it to be private. Because again, we want the ability to restrict the people that are coming there for commercial use next door. We don't want them parking in the neighborhood.
So are we talking gate?
A gate would be probably preferable.
So are you saying the straight, so you're talking about a gate right at the beginning of the long straightaway? Or when you get to that bulb?
No, no, it would be after, it would be after the bulb. Because you drive in, if you get to the bulb, that's a way to turn around, and that's also the connection to the bike trail. So anything after the bulb is literally just the road and the houses. Before the bulb is where you have your, your open spaces to the right of the bulb. And then immediately to the left of it is where you have the connection to the bike trail. So there's really no reason for anybody to go past that bulb because the only thing past that bulb is going to be houses.
Chris, what about the 14th house that's already there?
So they, they would...
I know they have, still have access to the 30-foot.
They would be behind the gate, and they'll have access to everything.
Okay, so they would also have to be a party to all the easements?
They already are.
I'm just making sure.
Yep, yep.
Is there a way that we could approve the one piece and then punt on the gate and come back to you with the gate decision later?
I was going to actually recommend that. The gate's not on the agenda, so it's probably better to handle that another day.
Or anyone?
White's Pond Preserve. Sorry, Blue's trying to find, so you can see it.
And then with respect then to the motion, what we're asking for is the ability to, for J.T.J. D. Investments LLC to maintain White's Pond Preserve as a private street with public access up into, up until, what's a more...
Up into, including the ball bout.
You can see, it's on the screen now.
It's the ball bout to the cul-de-sac.
Is that a proper term?
Yes, a ball bout is a proper term.
All right.
Yes.
All right.
Yeah, it is.
Okay, and I believe, I mean, I was...
It's just weird, you don't normally see it.
Okay, and then from this point?
No, go the other side of the line.
No, no, that's where I want it.
But we...
I'm sorry.
But... This, from here in this direction would be considered strictly private.
You need to go back a little bit farther.
No, no, that, that's where I mean.
Yeah.
I thought Mr. Horner described was...
You're the right spot?
Yep, because the idea of what we would ideally want is that's where we would place either the gate or the signs that said, hey, no throughway, no, no public access or whatever. And we place the signs there because the idea is if you got down, then you said, oh, wait, I'm not in the right spot. You have a spot to turn around. Or you were going down there, walking down the street to connect to the bike trail, you can still get on it without...
So your gate, your signage or whatever would be in this general area?
Correct, and, and the goal is, again, if somebody's parking, trying to park to go to the restaurant or to... That they're not parking on this 20, because if you recall, there's, the waiver was granted here, and it's a 22-foot wide street. And if you get a busy restaurant there, lives of people in this neighborhood.
But the whole thing, the straightaway and the bulb would be private, but you're just asking...
Correct, to restrict access after that point.
Okay, all right, so...
When we say public access in this case, we're saying, meaning municipal public access, right?
Right, there's no, there's really no reason for anybody to drive down this road unless you're going to the community, right? There's, there's nothing, there's nowhere to park, there's no, I mean, it's, it's a 22-foot wide road.
I'm really saying that for clarification, so that we're defining public here, meaning, yes, the police can come, fire department.
Yeah, but not the general public.
Not Amy Moraski was going to pick me up.
Not Amy Moraski, the public, exactly. So when we say public, when we say public access.
If you delivery drivers, your friends, your neighbors have the ability to use it.
John, I can't recall where we netted out on the sidewalk situation. The sidewalk starts here and you can kind of cross.
We basically harmonized the sidewalks with the Gibbs's plan because without the waivers, it would have been parking lot, sidewalk, road, sidewalk, bike path. And we were like, that's a lot of impound of surface.
So, so if Amy did show up with her picnic... So if Amy did show up with her picnic basket, going to her friend's house, she'd still be able to get there by the sidewalk without the gate, right?
Yes, yeah, so she could take, she could take the bike path down, she could take the multimodal path, bike path down.
And get there.
And go right there. She could walk on the sidewalk, or through the Gibbs', if you're in the Gibbs parking lot, there's actually a sidewalk that connects.
That's kind of what I was getting at, if your friend was visiting you on a bike, they wouldn't need to know the code to get to your house, right? They could just ride the bike to your house.
Correct, correct. And again, I just, I, in thinking about it, if I was living in here, and there's a restaurant next door, and that gets overcrowded, and every time I come home, there's a bunch of cars parked on the street, coming back from the bar.
Theoretically, they might have friends in Schofield that might want to take their bikes, eventually they might have friends in Schofield.
The bike is great, it's, yeah, so, to me, I think, I think a gate's a reasonable way to prevent that, and I think it'd be fair to the residents there, because again, it's not, it's not a through road, it's making it so, hey, people can just be private in their homes, and just the people they want back by their homes.
Okay, so just to be clear, we're probably not going to vote on the gate tonight, we just need the.
Well, I don't think we can, because it's not.
So, okay, so does that, someone want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve Clara Lane as a private roadway as requested, and this would also include public municipal access for services provided.
I'll second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Do we need a roll call, or this is just a waiver request, right? We're good? Yeah?
Yeah, you start.
Roll call, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Okay, sounds like a five-o to me, John.
Is your daughter happy about the name?
She is, we're not through the process yet, we've got to get all the way through addressing, and then they might try to change the name.
John, the June workshop is filling up, so if you want to get back on that one, the July, maybe a July meeting or June workshop.
Do you need another letter for me to get on?
No.
Yeah, so, all right.
The events, I'm looking for the gate.
A description, yeah.
No problem, I'll do that, and then I'll be back.
That would be helpful to us, again, also to spell out exactly where it will go, and that kind of thing.
Ballabout.
All right. Thanks, John, introducing us to that new word, too, ballabout, that is, I thought you were making that up on us, but.
All right, well, I'll see if the gate, I'm not 100% on the gate, it might be more trouble than it's worth, so if you get a letter, I'll be back, if not, then, so, all right, thank you very much.
Thanks, John. Okay, so the next, we are looking at H2, Continued Discussion, Possible Action, including scheduling a public hearing or workshop regarding accessory dwelling units. So, let's take that one on, I mean, I think, I'll speak personally, I think we've workshopped this one to death already, so I personally would look to move to a work, to a hearing before we go to a workshop.
Absolutely.
On this one in particular, I think we've had.
I agree with that.
You need to hear from the public at this point.
So with that, I think, I checked with Ellen Lorraine, we're looking at August 5th at 5:30 for public hearing. Okay, so the motion I'd look for on H2 then is to send this to a public hearing for, to the accessory dwelling unit, the public hearing.
At Rollins.
At Rollins, at 5:30, August 5th, that's the motion I'd be looking for.
Okay, I move that we set up a public hearing on August 5th at Rollins for the accessory dwelling, I'm sorry, for the accessory dwelling units ordinance.
I'll second.
Okay, second from Councilperson Saliva, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Similarly, we have the option, this is for Wetlands, so Continued Discussion, Possible Action, to include scheduling a public hearing or workshop regarding the Wetlands ordinance. This one, I think, you know, I probably feel the same way, I think that we've, at least, but, but I come at it from a different, because I actually have had the opportunity to hear Brent's presentation a couple of times, so I personally feel I'm good, but I'm open to if people would, but if they're ready to send this one to a workshop, I mean, I'm sorry, a hearing also, then it would be August 5th at 5:30. Does anyone have any, okay, so let's.
Let's go to.
Public hearing?
Public hearing, yeah.
Okay, don't want to make, clearly you want to go ahead and make a motion, I'm looking for August 5th, 5:30 at Rollins.
Yeah, I move that we, that the Wetlands draft recommendation be heard at a public hearing on 5:30 on August 5th at the Rollins Center.
Okay, motion by Councilperson Saliva, can I get a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilperson Maraski, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, anyone opposed?
No.
Abstain? Nope, okay. H4, this is certainly one we've seen in the, well, not this one in particular, but the next one now, workshop, so this one is reworking regarding the proposed revisions to Section 74 of Holiday's City of Lewis Employee Personnel Manual. This has, the main change here is giving a swing day to make up for the loss of the Columbus, and then I think Shelby made the point that oftentimes you, if Christmas, say, falls on a Tuesday, you might find people, you know, getting the Monday or half-day Monday, so this gives them the option of having a sort of a swing holiday, so that would be the, the motion I'd be looking for is to accept section, the revision to Section 74 of the Holiday's portion of the City of Lewis Personnel Manual.
I'll make a motion that we accept the proposed revisions to Section 7.4 Holiday's of the City of Lewis, of the Employee Personnel Manual.
Motion by Councilperson Elder, can I get a second?
I'll second.
Councilperson Saliva gets a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The second part of their updates comes in Section 11.5, and we're on H5 now, this is a drug and alcohol-free workplace policy of the City of Lewis. What we're saying here, as we've included, anyone who operates a city vehicle or equipment of any capital expense would be subject to a random drug test, is that fair to say, or do you want to come up and articulate it better than I did?
It would be those who are safety sensitive, or who are authorized to have a take-home vehicle. So, our safety sensitive already are the CDL holders and the police, and the police have the take-home vehicles, the CDL holders operate the heavy equipment, and then outside of that, it would be the city manager and assistant city manager who have an authorized take-home vehicle, so those would really be the new additions to the random selection. And it would be the same for when they're hired, pre-employment, anybody in those safety sensitive positions would be, have marijuana in that pre-employment drug test, those who are not, it would be removed.
And then, again, just for the community, this is really a reaction, cannabis has been medically legal for quite some time, and it's becoming recreational legal, so I think this is a nod to the fact that we don't have the intention of drug testing every single person we employ, so. Okay, with that, does anyone want to make a motion to accept 11.5 of the drug and alcohol work-free policy?
I move that we accept the revision 7.5 of the alcohol-free workplace policy of the City of Lewis.
Okay, motion, Councilperson Maraski, can I get a second?
Second.
Councilperson Elder with a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, Shelby, thank you for that, and for those who don't know, for the last couple of years, you've been having like an employee engagement group, and done a really good job of getting the feedback from the employees, both positive and negative, so that this is a good working through of that, and it did take some time, but, you know, that's got us to here, so appreciate that. And so we have one more agenda item, and that has to do, I believe, Councilperson Elder and Councilperson Ritzard had new business I1, which is a discussion, possible action to include adding an upcoming workshop regarding a draft ordinance amendments to driveway with rule on residential city streets and alleys. Does, do one of you want to kind of talk us through what we're looking at here?
I'll start off. This kind of came to our attention, few citizens brought up the notion that it was very difficult to widen driveways, and we found that widening driveways isn't really a good thing in some areas of the city, so it was noticed by a lot of people, a lot of people's efforts, that there are areas of the city that have some very unique configurations that are different than a regular street. We happen to, in our code, put alleys in the area of street, so by separating out street, we found that, or by separating out alley and defining alley, we found that there were several areas in the city that would qualify as an alley, and I'll read those off, it would be Bay Avenue, Bethel Alley, Bradley Alley, Chestnut Alley, Mall Alley, Midland Avenue, Orr Street, Rodaline Avenue, St. Paul Street, Ship Carpenter Square, and Mulberry Street. They all had some very unique characteristics that made them very much different than what we would define as a street. So, they, these are the attributes, and we were looking at this and saying, well, if they would have two of these attributes, they would fall under the idea of being an alley rather than a street. Now, that wouldn't mean that we would be looking at changing names of these streets, we would just identify them as alleys. So, one is that it's a one-way roadway, and many of these are one-way roadways, does not provide access to public property, and is a secondary means of access to a budding property, and/or is not intended for general traffic circulation. So there are a lot of areas in these particular streets, they're not really intended for general traffic, they're intended for residents or visitors to get to these homes, has no legal parking on the roadway, well, many of these have no, well, actually, the one that we're thinking of is, Bay Avenue has no parking posted on either side of the alley. And then, if you get to, provides access to the rear of a lot or the side of a lot that is treated as the rear under the setback rules for accessory buildings and structures. When we looked at these alleys, we found that many of them, most of them serviced the backs of houses or the sides of houses, they weren't on a main thoroughfare, and they weren't facing a street. Now, there are a few of these alleys that do have an occasional house that faces the alley, but most don't, and provides, okay, and has rolled curbs or no curbs, and does not have sidewalks on either side. So, all of these alleys are unique also in the fact that they have no sidewalks. So, what we were, what we're looking at is, can we design an ordinance that would allow these alleys to not have, have to fall under the definition of street, which is where alley is now, because if we define them as streets, and they do any renovation to their driveway in terms of surface area, if they put in bricks, permeable surfaces, they're going to have to bring their driveway entrance down to 12 or 20 feet, and all of these particular areas of the city, these alleys, which we're calling them, are so unique in the widths of the driveways that are already there. Now, what, how does that look? Well, if you go into Ship Carpenter, for example, there are some driveways there that are up to 40 feet wide, and they're only the depth of a car, so if they bring their driveway entrance down to 20 feet, I believe it was, Tim, they pull in, they can't, they won't be able to negotiate into their driveways, in fact, many of the cars in there, their bumpers come right to the edge of their curbs, and they've got a building in front of them, they can't really negotiate. That's the whole development there. Plus, in that particular development, the fronts of the houses face the surrounding streets, it's really like an alley, it serves only the back of their house. And then the houses that do, well, actually, they face the lawn, the green there. If you go to Bay Avenue, Bay is very unique in that there's no parking there, we have some, the people that live there, they have the beach facing them, actually, it could be the back, the front, I don't know what the designation is at this point, but they really need to go down that street to get to their house, so it's not to be traveled by a whole lot of traffic. Plus, on that, on that particular road, you have no curbs. We do need to be able to get, though, there are streets that cross the alley, all right, and where they cross the alley, those would remain streets, so they would need to have curbing and adhere to the driveway, or the street provision. When we looked at Bethel Alley, is still a cinder alley, I believe that's the one that's cinder all the way down from the hospital, and if you look at that, no curbing, the homes take up almost their whole lot with a garage and utility areas. Chestnut's, no, Chestnut Street, we took off, Chestnut did not meet the guideline, right? Chestnut Street?
No, it's solicited, I mean.
Solicited.
Here.
Okay, we left it on the sheet, okay. Mall Alley, again, Mall Alley is by the church that was renovated, it's like a horseshoe, it goes around the back, it serves the backs of the houses on Park, and there are a couple houses along Mall Alley, Mall Alley, they face, yeah, what's.
Let me just clarify that, Mall Alley's, you have to turn on St. Paul Street.
St. Paul, I'm sorry.
To get to Mall Alley. Mall Alley connects from St. Paul over to, over to West Mulberry, so it's, it is, as you described, a U shape, but there are three streets, or three names applied to the different roadways there. Please, go ahead, Joe.
So, basically, in looking at these alleys, these alleys all have certain things in common that separate them from streets, which, if we look at these as alleys, it would be very beneficial, not only to the residents that live there, but it would be beneficial to the city, because if people are parking in the alleys behind their homes, they're not parking, a lot of times, they won't be parking on the street, and if they just naturally do that, it will leave more room for visitors to the city. And I think that would just happen naturally. As far as, if you look at this very closely, there are a couple of things that we would need to change in, in, in an ordinance to redefine a couple of things, and I would say, as far as, a couple of the things that would need to change would be the language, under design standards, any access to a city street of right-of-way shall comply with the design standards of Chapter 197, 19761C. No driveway or other access area within a city street of right-of-way shall exceed 20 feet in width. So it's changing that a bit, but that wouldn't, that wouldn't really apply to these alleys, it would apply to the streets. A definition of off-street parking, there was a small change that would need to take place there, a definition of off-street parking is a space that is permanently reserved, temporary storage, for one motor vehicle, and that is not located but is directly accessible to a dedicated street or right-of-way, or right-of-way by driveway. So, what we would be doing is, we would be changing some of the language there, which is noted at the top. And then in the second paragraph here, and some of the detail, we would, we would maintain the driveway cuts in areas R4, R4H, and the town center, okay, so that would all stay the same. And when Councilman Ritzard and I toured the city, trying to see if this would work, we found that the curb cuts are really a good thing in the main part of the city, because they allow us to maintain parking for guests and residents, but in the alleys, it's, it's really not useful to have public parking back there, or promote the parking along the alley. So, I don't know, we, I was hoping that we, after we discussed this, we'd be able to take this to a workshop, maybe have some of the people that this would affect come in, so they could have some input into it, and then if we thought that it would work, work on making it an ordinance and moving it forward.
Thank you, can I speak, are you finished?
Sure.
I, first, I want to compliment my colleagues for their work on this. I, first, I want to compliment my colleagues for their work on this, because I found it very interesting, and I agree with Councilman Elder in that, you know, there's nothing uniform about the City of Lewis when it comes to their streets.
That is what's uniform.
Yeah, that's what-- and, you know, I know this takes a lot of work to see things, and I look forward to learning more. I've got a pretty basic knowledge of what this is moving towards, and I think it's a really good goal. I do have a question of Janelle, and because it's always kind of frustrated me when we started with the prohibition of stacking cars, which we finally got rid of a few years ago. I still don't really understand the policy reasons, and maybe, Janelle, you can enlighten me, on why we limit a driveway to 20 feet. I don't-- if someone wants to park more cars there and do-- I mean, why do we care?
So, your driveway's not limited to 12 or 20 feet. Your curb cut, your entrance is. So, once you get at the right-of-way line, at your property line, right-of-way line, you're either got 12 or 24. Once you get past your property line, you can make your entire front yard into your driveway. That's perfectly fine, as long as, of course, you comply with your lot coverage requirement. It's really your curb cut that is limited to 12 or 20 feet. And right now, the only time we enforce that is really when you're putting in a brand-new driveway and when you're changing materials. So, if you have a stone driveway and you add more stone to it now, you don't require a driveway permit unless you're trying to widen it.
Or improve it.
Well, it depends on if you've taken it all out and put in it all back in, that's a new driveway. But we've had people add more stone to an existing stone driveway, not required a driveway permit, because--
It's maintenance.
It's maintenance.
Right.
So, there is a difference between maintenance. So, if I have a pothole and I need to fix it, you don't have to come to compliance.
But if you have gravel or shells, whatever, and you want to go to pavers or something else, that requires the permit and compliance.
It does. But again, only at the property line.
Correct.
Yep.
Right.
And I think where that has caused some difficulty is within streets, because especially in the older areas of the city, when you narrow that curb cut, it makes it difficult for them to get in and widen out in some cases. Our new developments, we found, when we looked around, really aren't a problem, because when they're developed, they make them with the correct-sized driveway, and everything seems to fit. But overall, looking around the city, would you say, Councilman Richard, that we found that the driveway widths aren't really problematic in the majority, on the majority of the streets?
I would agree with that. The problem, the choke point tend-- I believe the choke point is the entrance onto the right-of-way, the public right-of-way, and that's what we are trying to address with this proposed language.
And of course, we have, we found, just in looking around, some of the-- some of the homes, some of the places we saw had-- Oh, we saw some driveway cuts in town that were very, very large, and they had been utilized differently than the driveway. They had fences, and they were storing things in the backyards. But we didn't take back our code there, which would have been--
Would be beneficial inside.
This is because we gained a couple of parking spots in our commercial--
Right. What about the idea, you propose a workshop. How about the LPC getting a bite of the apple first? Any thoughts on that?
We didn't really think about it, and really, I think Councilman Richard and I did a lot of the legwork, looking around to validate this, but there were a lot of people that gave a lot of input into kind of crafting this. We have to give them a lot of credit for that.
But what about the-- I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead, please.
So, the Planning Commission does look at driveway, I mean--
Was it 187?
Yes, 187. And so, I'm not-- first of all, I'm complimenting as well. I mean, you've done something that's interesting and innovative and maybe clarity at the end result. A couple of things that I would say is that I know the Planning Commission is trying in all of their activities to say a purpose or a why. So, reading this, even if we go to a workshop, what problem are we trying to solve, needs to be clear. The folks that live on these know, but for the general public, this is confusing. Well, why are you doing this? And you're doing it for good reason. So, that's one thing that I would say, is that the clarity of the reason why, the purpose, kind of like the preamble, sets the stage for any kind of conversation. The Planning Commission does have responsibility to look at ordinance change related to parking. That doesn't mean that you don't have a workshop, or it doesn't mean that you even, you could say to the Planning Commission, we'd like you to attend, like, we're getting this input, but why would this ordinance go to a workshop and not to Planning Commission? I'm just trying to get some clarity of why would we, why would we, why would we take a concept, not give it to them, or how do we involve them so they don't reinvent the wheel as well?
Sure. And I didn't really have anything in mind, and I don't know that Councilman Richard did. We just wanted to try to get the information from the residents that were having issues, do the due diligence, the research, and, believe me, it's taken a long time to get this far. And then, see, what do we have to do to get everybody on board? And that's one of the reasons we brought it here, too, because we wanted to make sure we had the whole council on board with this, too.
Yeah, no, I think bringing it to us, because it's a new concept, is a great idea. I just don't want to undermine the Planning Commission's role.
Sure.
Another option would be to have the workshop, and then, when we got a final, when we have an ordinance--
A proposal.
--that we're ready to send, then we could get their, hey, why don't you guys have a look at this?
Right.
Yep. And give them the heads up that we really do want them to attend the workshops, or whoever they designate to is going to lead this. That way, we're all working on the same side.
I like that process.
And what's really cool about this is, it's all about quality of life in the City of Lewis.
Mm-hmm.
It's all about trying to gain input from people and kind of do what's right for everybody, and have that uniformity. And this looks at it in a kind of a uniform way, I think, I hope.
Yeah. So, is there still room on the June agenda? Do you want to get into that? Is that what you're going to propose? I don't think we need to make a motion, as long as there's a consensus that we're all comfortable with that. Okay.
All right. Let's do that.
All right. And so, with that, we're almost done. Let's take some public comment. Is there anyone online? Okay. And before we get to Mr. Scholl, is there anyone from the audience that would like to make a comment? Come on up. Just introduce yourself.
Hello, guys.
Hello.
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Sarah Prieto, and I am a Native American woman, business owner, and here with me is my husband, Stephen Matthews, a United States Air Force veteran. We live at 405 Savannah Road, and I am here to ask the council to add dog grooming to the approved list of home businesses. This will be a hyper-local business focused on local dog owners within a one-mile radius, combined with a one-on-one approach and a by appointment-only booking. This is designed to ensure that there is no extra foot nor vehicular traffic interfering with the neighborhood. The individualized sessions means each client gets all of my attention. There will be no kennels, cages, nor boarding of any kind. I utilize my fear-free certification to incorporate other stress-reducing methods, including positive reinforcement and pheromone therapy. Additionally, I have a puppy plan to introduce young dogs to the grooming experience. All of this is designed to reduce stress and minimize any noise associated with the business. Safety and well-being is a top concern for me. Clients will show an immunization record prior to being seen. I will be using Disafectic that kills parvovirus and kennel cough, plus other diseases. I will clean between each client, and since my target clients are local, it is expected that they will be curbed prior to arriving to the property. I have retained a separate insurance policy to cover any incidents that arise, and I also have a relationship with Savannah Animal Hospital for any emergencies. As a resident, I want my home business to be compliant with the historical neighborhood and keep its residential charm. In accordance with code, there will be no permanent signage. My business, Beach Paws Pet Spa, is an organic and luxury-inspired experience using the latest techniques from my fear-free certifications, delivered in a calm and loving environment by myself. I look forward to discussion, discussing this further, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for coming forward.
Thanks.
Can I ask, Ellen Lorraine, typically when you get a picture to make a change, we'd obviously, we'd have to go through like some kind of regular process, and then have the, essentially, the table changed between that service?
That would be correct, Rachel. Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Okay.
I appreciate your request to us and the fact that you're one of our local entrepreneurs here in Lewis.
Trying.
Yeah, yeah. That's great.
All right. So, what's my next--
So, what we would like to do then is, I mean, if it's not objective, we could get on a future workshop. So, the workshops, we typically have on Thursdays. I think the next one we have is the 27th of June. I'm happy to get it on that.
Okay, perfect.
And I think you've submitted a letter to each of us.
Yes, I did, yeah.
I think, I'm not sure what else we might want you to provide for that. Maybe Ellen Lorraine would be able to, you know, some additional things for consideration.
Get in contact with you. Okay, but prior to. Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay. Blue, is anyone else-- I don't see anyone raising their hand. Okay. Bill?
Can you just expand a little more--
I can.
--on Ellen Lorraine's agreement and some of the process behind that, why it took the time that it did, and why Ellen Lorraine was the choice?
I appreciate that. I will address some, and then, yeah, so Ellen Lorraine, as you know, has come out of our staff. She's worked for the city for 18 years, so I think one of the difficult things to come to an agreement on, frankly, is most of these roles are strictly at-will. So, we've kind of made an amalgamated agreement here, recognizing that she's been with the city a long time, so clearly, for the four causes and these things, there are certain provisions, but if, you know, we've allowed a future council to move to an at-will position, and then that would give her some flexibility into the future to come back into a staff role. And I think that's unique in what other cities have looked for, where they've gone to market, they've looked for, you know, someone to take on that role. And, you know, again, to Ellen Lorraine's credit on the compensation piece, she recognized was trading security in a role that she's been working in for a long time for salary. So, I can tell you that the salary is nowhere near what we've seen from a recent signings. And there's also no moving expenses, so it's largely, you know, a $20,000 or $30,000 raise to what she's been getting. And there's really not much else, you know, in terms of accoutrements. You know, she's been getting a car, she doesn't want a, and she doesn't even want a new laptop, so. So, we do recognize that it's not--
I'll take it.
Yeah, exactly. And like I said, the thing that took some time is, part of it was this interim piece of seeing is a role that she wanted to step into. Was it, did we have the right person? I think we recognized early on that we had the right person. I think there were some discussions in sessions that, you know, the piece of at-will, we don't want to handcuff a future council, but we feel that this agreement allows the flexibility for future councils to move to at-will, but not, you know, putting Ellen Lorraine in a position where she's, you know, the 18 years that she's given the city and good work at that is for nothing. So, yeah, I think it's a good agreement. It's not a great, you know, even from her perspective, you know, no one's, I think a good agreement is when, you know, both sides are a little bit like, eh, it's not quite what, you know, but I think the good news is, we've got the person we want, and that's the important part here.
Okay. Would you like to make a comment about that?
I just appreciate the confidence that council has shown me while I've been doing this acting position, and I hope to continue that in the full-time role.
Bill, the other thing I will add is that, you know, because there was this interim period, that some of the input we got was informal, albeit informal, but the staff really gave her strong endorsement. Multiple staff from different departments made it known that this was the person they also wanted, and I think that, not only the confidence that we had in her, but the fact that the staff is also, they know, she's a known quantity to them, and they respect her, and for us, we're not going to have maybe some of the grow, you know, the ramp-up period that we might see if we brought in, you know, someone brand-new, yeah?
And Janet, are you going to stay on as acting assistant?
No, I think that that's--
That's for our city manager to decide.
Okay. No, but that's what I'm getting at.
Exactly.
Okay. Great. Okay.
Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Yeah, Bill.
Thanks, Bill.
All right. Anyone else? No. Okay.
I make a motion that we adjourn.
All right, all right. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Second from Councilperson Richard. All in favor?
Aye.
All right.